Okay, I'll hold the meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Gill's March 29, 2023 revised order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, 38, Section 8D, meetings of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District Schools Committee will be conducted both in person and remote through March 31, 2025. The agenda items are those recently anticipated by the Chair, not all items listed may in fact be discussed, items not listed may be brought up for discussion to an extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB and will be broadcast once transcribed, the proof minutes will be made public and posted to our website. The meeting is also being recorded by the Eds, the Eagles, and I believe the Districts. Let's go right into superintendent's report.
Okay, so I think we'll start with the roses and thorns and we'll start with the building principles. Let's start with Christopher. It takes better to come up than people in TV land.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Thanks for having me. You have the right to have their real quick.
Well, I think the biggest rose right now was that just this evening, a few minutes ago, we had our fall athletics meeting and so there were a whole bunch of kids, a whole bunch of parents and family members in the auditorium. I have yet to see, you know, a group like that, so that was really special and it's sort of like the leaves changing in the fall, you know? You know, it's beautiful things are about to begin to happen, so I was glad to see them. We are in the process of hiring a math teacher and a part-time French teacher, so those are the last two structural positions that we need to fill. Those appointment letters have gone to superintendent's office and I'm sure that they'll be finalized very soon if it's not already. We've also had the opportunity to meet with about half of our teachers, roughly 26 who've come in for conversation, been very impressed with their experience, their dedication to our students, our community, and you know, I've probably said this before, but one of the thrills of the work for me is working with teachers. They obviously care deeply about young people and are very heartwarming because their passions and we see them in action. The thorns are really just a couple of things. Pair position not filled yet, and so we're working on that. And the other thing is just frankly, just running out of time, you know? Now that the time is really starting, you know, the anxiety and stress starts to go up and you start to remember the 43 other things that you didn't break down yet, so we're working on that. It's all going to come together. It's how Jake, Candace and I were talking, the kids are going to show up and everything's going to be fine. So thank you for your support. Any questions on any of that? I don't know if it's practical, so.
Yeah, good. All right, Jake, come on down. Can you sit there on deck? Before you start, I'm going to do a roll call after Jake has said.
I was going to do that one-on-one.
I'm slow, you're probably going to take a roll call while I make my way up here on my pad wheels. Thanks, pleasure to be here. I'm Jake. We haven't met in person, so it's nice to meet you. Lots of roses and then a couple of thorns, oh, which come out of this branch. I would just like to say, so I was, we were sitting, doing an interview in the conference room at DuBois last week, and I saw something that I'd never seen in my 30 years of being a public school educator, and that was a custodian outside on a ladder washing exterior windows. And I, and I, I, he, he, we caught eyes for a second, and I think he was worried that he was disturbing us, and I was just sitting there going, oh my goodness, bless you, I have never seen this. I had to go out because I've never seen this. And I, I think that would typify for, for me, you know, an observation from working in a few different places. Scott, Jenny, and the team of folks at DuBois, that, that building, I struggle to believe every day that I'm in it, that it is 20 years old in 2024. That place is taken care of like it's somebody's beloved home, and, and that doesn't happen by accident. So, you know, Steve's leadership and Scott's leadership and the folks that actually do the work, it's stunning to me and it's special, and I, I don't know that it's unique, that it's rare, and I'm grateful to them for giving our, our young people and our teachers such a, such attention to the place where, where they spend 180 days at a pop. I would also like to, the, the, having Cleo at the middle school this summer has been an incredible rose to me, and I think all of us that work there, including the custodial team, for it is a challenge, it's a real challenge, which is handled gracefully and gratefully. And then having the students there, you know, both our middle school students were there, Cynthia had, had, that program was also over at DuBois, and so that was a lot of fun getting to see our younger students in action, and then getting to see lots of high school students from monuments serving as leaders in classrooms and being mentors and doing that work. It certainly made the summer much more joyful. There's nothing more depressing than an empty school building, and so having, having young people in the building all summer made it a real joy for all of us. Just lots of thanks to all the people in the community who have allowed me to come and see them and who have been in to see me, I'm really grateful, from parents to community members to officials, to, to so many of our staff and our teachers, I'm very grateful to them. And we just got a little bit closer to having an absolutely full staff today. We, we, thanks to Peter, we signed an English teacher today for our eighth graders. We are close to having a school nurse completed, that search is completed, and the person knows that she's going to be meeting with Peter to talk about how to, how to finalize that. We hired a guidance counselor a couple of weeks ago, and, and we just today sent up a recommendation for a paraprofessional for our BDC program, we're very excited about that. The thorns are all just, I am sorry to all involved that you have a principal who is working so feverishly to come up to speed on so many things in the new district and the new building, and so I, I really just, just been thankful for the patience and the understanding and the massive amount of work and teaching that has gone into helping me get up to speed so I can lead this building to the level that the, the kids and families and all the people that do the work deserve. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Hello, Cynthia Carey. I apologize if I wasn't able to be here two weeks ago when everybody else was introduced, but I'm Cynthia Carey, the new principal at Muddy Brook Elementary. I'm really excited to be the new principal there. I was the assistant principal prior to that for three years. So my roses are, again, I'm going to echo exactly what Jake said and thank our custodial staff and Steve's guys. Adam, Dylan, Jeff, and Gino are absolute angels, they have, they do a wonderful job in our building. You would have no idea that it's 20 years old. It's gorgeous, and the same thing, I walked in the art room and I said to Gino, what is Adam doing up on the lights? I didn't know he was, oh, he's just blowing off the dust from the light bulbs. Amazing. So, so our building is, is lovely and like those guys worked really hard all summer long to make it so, so I really appreciate that. And also the horde crew, the Horde Holter crew who does the grounds, it's, our building is beautiful, the hydrangeas and the everything is just really gorgeous, and I'm super grateful for that. We have also had donations from the West Dock Bridge Congregational Church backpacks that the congregation put together to give out to our students who might need a helping hand buying school supplies, so that is super thoughtful and I'm really grateful for that. We'll have a, a time next week for families to come by and pick them up. And we are actually fully staffed for our teacher staff, which is really super exciting, very happy. I'm also very hopeful that we will have a administrative assistant also on board, so I'll be fully staffed there, which is a great segue into my thorns, which is that I am short a lot of paraprofessionals. So we're working on that. There are two that I've reached out to and, and we'll figure it out. Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
We'll pass over student members. I do, okay, so. Come on the ball. Bill Vol.
Present.
Ann Hutchinson.
Here.
Jason said here.
Here.
Bonnie.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Bill Field.
Here.
Diane. Thank you. Cory.
Yeah.
Rich.
Here.
And myself, we're fully present. Yes, sir. So passing over to student member, students will likely join us, probably maybe the next meeting, but, but certainly the meeting, the meeting after that. We got a nice little surprise, we knew this was coming, but the state gives us an additional reimbursement for our, through a fund called the Emergency Assistance Shelter Fund, and it's capitalizing on a very complicated formula, but we're, for the 12 new arrivals that we had last year, we're getting $131,322.28, which is great.
For them, it could be spent in this space there.
Correct. So we'll likely come back to you at some point and suggest we use it for, at least part of it for transportation, connected to homeless students, and then maybe some other connected to staff that directly serve the students. But we'll come back to you with that later, I just wanted to get it out that it arrives. So.
And we have 11, you said?
It was based on, on 12 students from December 15th of '23 to June 25th of '24, and the state pulls us out of our system, and the 12 students were enrolled for a combined total of 1,252 days, and you multiply that times 10489 a day and get to the, the 131,322.28. So it's really, it's really significant, so.
And those families were really, really happy here.
Really, really happy here, and, and some of those families found housing in grandparents in our surrounding towns, and some of the families were, for a variety of reasons, relocated to Pittsfield through the McKinney-Vinto Act, which is the homeless, regarding homeless, or, or, and, and we don't use that word anymore, but the feds still do, un-housed students, they're able to remain in, in the school they started at. So the, the, I don't remember the exact split, but if there are six students in Pittsfield and they want to continue with us, then they can. Yeah, so it's really, it's really good, and Sharon's on the ball, and we might have even received the payment already, if we haven't, we might get it in a day or two. So, so that's good. I have a, a number of, or I guess four, maybe many more, lots of things for you to approve, and I'll try to go through them in a, in a same way. The first one is, and it's in your packet, a memorandum of understanding for safety care training stipends. So we have staff internally that can do this training. It's better our own staff lead the training than external people lead it, and all our folks who work with a particular subset of students need to participate in, in this training. So there's one, we're proposing one lead safety care trainer, who will be compensated $5,000, and two additional safety care trainers who would be compensated at, at $4,000. So if somebody would like to make a motion to approve that, that would be great.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. So I have a motion by Bill, second by Ann, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Jason?
Hi.
Bonnie?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane? Cory?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
And I. Okay, great. So my second one is a request for an out-of-state field trip. There's a Dodge Poetry Festival in New Jersey, newer, that historically we used to go to, and I think in the context of COVID, we stopped going, and there's an opportunity to go again. Jill Lynn Unruh, one of our English and drama teachers, and one other staff member would like to take 12 students, will, will, they'll drive one of our own white passenger vans. The event's free, so gasoline and tolls are the only expenses. I think it's a great opportunity, really nice that, that they would take students down there.
No motion. Hang on, so move.
Do I have a second?
Second. No, Bill, go ahead. Sorry. It says overnight, Peter, but the actual paper says they'll come back the same day.
They, they, they are. No, it's my understanding they're coming back the same day, so.
We approve both overnight and/or out-of-state. So if any of these are going to Jersey, we have to approve it.
Yeah, no, I get it, I get it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I would like to, since Christopher's here, the school used to have a poetry slam contest that was run by the English Department, and COVID got rid of that.
It was part of a national, yeah, it's a poetry outlet.
A poetry outlet, and Cory's two children won.
Carol, I got to go to DC.
Yeah, she was. And it was run by the English Department, and I would hope that this would lead to making some talk among the English Department, that they reinvigorate that program and start it again. And that's when, when I saw this, I thought this would be the seat to that, so that's all I want to say about that.
It was great. It started out school-wide, everybody in the English Department had to participate, and then it kind of kept the cycling on.
It was really neat, they had a school assembly when whole school went, and the kids, amazing number of kids who you would never expect to be on a stage reading poetry, their own, got standing ovations, it was wonderful.
Sounds really powerful, I've just written myself up. Thank you.
Person to, that we should name, I wish I thought, too. Well, Listen Van Pelt was the, was the head, and she was in the English Department.
With Joel and.
Joel and. Joel and Todd, right, Joel and her, I think, combined.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Roll call, Bill.
Hi.
Ann.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane. Cory.
I took a hearing test.
Rich.
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous.
Right.
So then the next two, and I want to give a little context on this, so Group 12 is, is the group that does some countywide professional development and other things, it's the group led by Jake Everwine. They, like us, are a longtime recipient of a BAR grant, and there's several other districts in Berkshire County that are doing Portrait of a Graduate work. As part of their grant renewal, they wrote us into their grant with BAR, so we have an opportunity to collaborate with Pittsfield at the Conic High School, I think, Wakona and, and North Adams, and maybe, maybe one other district. They have funding for a few stipends, and both of those are in here, so we, we took their language and put it into our own, our own format with, with their, really their guidelines. So I'd like to request your approval for, for both of these job descriptions. No motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
So a motion by Bill, second by Ann, discussion.
Do I have a question?
Yeah.
Was, was any of this work being done before, Peter, or is it because the scope of the project has expanded?
So, so we did our own work around the Portrait of the Graduate and shared some of that, and, and their work is, is quite parallel to it. I think the intent of, of BAR is to see it really embedded in each of the districts and, and go, go further, and I think also part of the intent of their grant was to have folks do this work in collaboration with each other and not in, in isolation. So we're seeing as doing really significant work connected to student voice, make space for student voice, and that's something they expect we can share with the other partners, and, and, and the other partners have things that they hope to share with us. Anyone else? Okay, roll call vote. Bill?
Hi.
Ann?
Yes.
Jason?
Hi.
Bonnie?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane? Cory?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
So thanks for all of those, and we've got three more, and I want to share a little context on these. So e- every year, the, the, and I'll have the principals come up in a sec and explain this, but every year we bring our handbook, school handbook, student handbook to the school committee for, for i- its approval, and in, in some years we make like significant changes, and in some years we make minor changes. You'll notice if you're looking at an electronic version of this, that there's even a more current version of the Muddy Brook one that we initially shared, so it's, it's in the packet as a revised handbook, and the most significant update is language around phones that, that warned, or inadvertently warned, the first one. Though several people have had eyes on this, there's also the likely or actual possibility that there's still some inaccuracies or things we need to clean up, and one of the things that was brought to my attention was some of the links that were good at one time are not good. So when I reread the, the handbooks, I didn't check every single link individually, we need to go back and check every single link, because if you click on one thing, it, and I think it's tied to us, but also MASC, the link we had is now a link to, was Andover or Happy Box?
Arlington.
Arlington, right. So, so we need to, we need to clean up those. So the principals will come up and explain the high-level changes. My recommendation is if you choose to approve them, you might want to put in some qualifying thing, like if we're granting additional approval with the expectation that, that all the links will be additionally reviewed and corrected before shared, and then we'll do that tomorrow or potentially Monday.
Can I just say, it's, it's links, it's, it's language, it's acronym, it's, you know, One Place Project Connection is referred to, and Tom Kelly is the contact information, so I just, I want to make sure it's, it's got to be a really thorough read through.
Yes, our apologies around that, I, I caught a ton of stuff, but, but I, I think I, I missed a couple, a couple things too. And what Cory's been doing, and that's all we do, is if you see things, send it to Peter and Rob, so, because no matter how many times they read it, they may not see the same thing you're saying, so it's.
Just the little tiny little typos and.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, and I don't want to make you all crazy, like it's not your job to be our copy editors, it's, it's our job, and, and the, we'll, we'll go through one more time, and they'll be, I think that this is fully, they'll be perfect as far as they go at it. But, but knowing that the minute they're perfect, then, then somebody comes and goes and something else happens, but, but as of Monday, or assuming you're, you're okay with that largely, a- as soon as we clean them up, that they'll be as, as clean as they can possibly be. So Cynthia, why don't you start and come up and just sort of share that.
Can I just make another generic, kind of general comment, just to keep in mind, it's something I've been asking for and I'd love to see, and I know other districts do it, but I mean, two things, one, it sounds like a net, but kind of consistency across schools would be great, even if it's silly things like font and format, and so just, I think the more we can present as one unit by district, the better, and some of that comes through our printed material, and then getting them all hyperlinked so that, and, and online, so that you can kind of go to something, you can click on the table of contents, it can take you right to that page. You could search, you know, if you're a parent looking for something, you want to know what the tardy, you know, sort of absentee policy is, you could just type that term in and it can take you right to the policy, just to make it a more usable document, if they do get used.
That is really good feedback, and I think we could do that. The sad thing is occasionally people look at handbooks for advice, but mostly when people look at handbooks is when something goes wrong, and, and when something goes wrong, that's when we actually want the language to be perfectly clear and, and accessible.
So I apologize, I'm sure my handbook is not at all perfect. I will definitely, without being down, an admin assistant has been a challenge this summer, we have the, my current admin assistant, and I have been racing the clock to get ready for school, so, but I certainly will take the time and make sure that this is correct. The major changes, though, to this handbook are, I just made an adjustment to the cell phone, just the wording of the cell phone and electronics policy about, they have never been allowed in our school and they still are not. So that, and then the Title IX, which the Title IX regulations changed over, over the, over the year, and so that was the biggest change in mine.
And actually, I mean, thanks for sharing that, I should have set that up front universally across all three handbooks, the Title IX language is the same and it all changed, and we'll talk about that in more detail when we get to policy.
And that's really it, and otherwise I will, I promise I will spread this, I can make sure that the names and the links are correct.
Where's the cell phone stuff?
Um, so.
It, it's not in.
It's not in here.
The printed copy you have.
Okay.
It's in the, the revised.
Yeah.
It, it's in the, the revised one, it's online. Okay. Okay, thanks. Jake?
We similarly at DuBois Regional Middle School have, will be in year two of a no electronic devices, with the exception of a laptop that can be brought from home. So no mobile phones, no iPads, no smartwatches, which, which I know is, is a challenging one, but the, the, in order to maintain the, the, the positives that we want to gain by keeping students' personal electronics free during the day, we believe that smartwatches were actually pretty vital for including in, in this policy. And so really, we have the luxury of DuBois, so being a fully locker school, so obviously students will have them with them, students go places after school, they're in activities, we do understand that for families to make their family logistics work, it is sometimes pretty important, although I do love, DuBois has a broken payphone. I, I think it must be there as a museum piece to explain to elementary students who are over at Cleo what that was. But, but families do need to be in touch, and students do need to be in touch with the, the people at home, and so they aren't allowed to be in the building. And so they aren't allowed to be in the building, but really turned off and in a locker for the whole day. And then consequences that go along with that, you know, nothing, nothing diabolical, but really just intended to 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 get the message across that that you, as a young person, deserve a distraction-free workday. And and so that's what the the responses are here toward. We are going to be, we're working a little bit of a detour. We are working on on creating and developing a sustainable PTO model, Parent Teacher Organization for DuBois. And one of the things we would like to do with the kickoff of that is offer families the opportunity to be part of the Wait Till Age program, which is a national program that suggests, that gives parents sort of a, I I don't want to use this phrase, but I will, gives parents a support network and a support group to to push back against the immense peer pressure that can be delivered by 10, 11, 12, and 13-year-olds around the fact that everybody has a phone except for me, and you're ruining my life. And we would like.
What's it called, Jake?
It's called Wait Till Age, Wait Till Age.
It's great.
Yeah, so it's a pretty great, pretty like prominent.
It's, yeah, it sounds good.
Yeah. So the the other major change, you know, in addition to the Title Nine changes, which came from the federal government, we did do some substantial tweaks to our dress expectations for students. All of the changes, those on page four, for anybody that's following along, all of those are really aimed at just modernizing, modernizing our approach to what students wear to school and and to give students and their families a little more agency. And quite frankly, just to to sort of back away from some of the expectations that have been in schools for decades and decades, that that on a surface level and on a deeper level can appear quite sexist. So really, just just trying to to modernize and ensure that that clothing is going to be worn that is not offensive to somebody with a purpose, that is not promoting things that are really antithetical to our beliefs or our philosophies or as a public school system. But but, you know, giving a little more agency to individual students and their families for what their students are allowed to wear in the school. And we will be keeping a, you know, keeping an eye on that to see how it goes. And and we think it will be just fine. I think it gets us in line with many, many middle schools across the Commonwealth and across the country. So those are our primary changes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. So I apologize for any mistakes that there may have been in our handbooks, was a few. We'll go through, you know, even more thoroughly, make sure that the links are properly linked and there's everything there, right? So apologies. The the biggest changes were really the reduction of pages by creating links. And again, we'll have to check up, recheck all those. It was pointed out to me, thank you, Rich, about the new wording that articulates pieces of our grading system. And honestly, I couldn't figure out exactly what it was. It may be the proficiency-based language in there that describes different levels of proficiencies, but that's not in place yet. It says our teachers are working on it, and that work is ongoing. If I can figure out that it's something different, and I've already put my feelers out to Pete Vergio and to Ian, and if if it's something different, I'll definitely circle back around that, okay? The cellphone procedures are obviously a big one at the high school. So, you know, students need to keep their cellphones in their lockers throughout the day. And and then, you know, basic procedures that we'll have behind that. And again, nothing, nothing crazy, but just basic, you know, removing phones, ultimately have parents pick them up if need be, and partnering with families to make sure that we have kids not distracted and give them their best opportunity to learn.
They don't have lockers. They're not going to have new lockers?
Well, yeah, we have a whole ton of lockers in the building, and they will all be assigned, yep.
Email one out today saying that everyone's going to get them. Reassign new lockers.
That's basically the reasoning, I'm guessing, we are signing one session.
I mean, I honestly, I've worked in a number of schools, and it's been a long time since I've kids seen kids use lockers. Everybody just carries a backpack, doesn't use a locker, which is a little crazy, even with my own kids, like, that always, do you really need all that stuff? I know you don't, yes, I do. Anyway, so maybe that'll change, you know? I remember back in the start ages, when we used to go to our locker in between classes and get what we needed and anyway, so who knows? Maybe it starts up there. Yeah.
So then now they will go to their lockers. If the phone is really in the locker, they will go there at every opportunity.
Good point. Another problem to solve. The other thing.
Why are all the kids at their lockers?
The other thing is about cellphones, I hope teachers will be urged to stay off phones in front of their students. Yeah, and that's. And that's probably a temptation that's hard to resist, just like, you know, parents are addicted to phones and and model their behave, kids' behavior terribly. If your teachers aren't off the phones, it's a, it's not a good, it's not a good sign. It's not a good book, it's not a good model. And and you're absolutely right, that is something that we're going to absolutely communicate to teachers. And just from my own practice, I've been accustomed to texting, you know, various different members within a school that I, you know, communicate with all their, let's call it to assistant principals, for example, at Monument. And what we, what I did last year was I said, listen, we all, let's stop this, we can't do it in front of the kids. So to the best that you can, you know, duck around the corner, you know? Like, we are communicating, somebody go find this child, or whatever the case may be, but we don't want to, we don't want that to be the look that we have. So we're going to be more discreet about it, and we can really, we're very mindful of what it looks like when we're doing that. So but that also aligns for the teachers as well. And then, you know, the Title IX procedures, Peter mentioned those, I think that's really the bigger points. So if you have any questions about any of the other pieces or anything at all? Thank you, appreciate it.
So you want to come up with a motion to approve?
Go, one motion for all three?
Yes.
Motion to approve the three handbooks as proposed, subject to discretion of the administration to remedy any scripters errors.
So a motion by Regis, a second by Bill Field, discussion. No discussion, no questions, roll call, Bill Loeb.
Hi.
Ann Hutchinson.
Yes.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah. Bill.
Yes.
Diane. Cory.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
And thank you for all the hard work. So what I'm going to do now, this is another thing that you approved, and then you get a little break on approvals, and then we'll get to policy, and we do it all over, is the the draft district improvement plan. So obviously, this is in the packet, I'll share a little context and then go through it in more detail. One of the things we heard loud and clear from our colleagues was we need to do a little less, or quite a bit less, be very focused and and not overwhelmed folks with stuff. And even though I think historically, the things we've put in documents like this have been important and significant, there have been lots of conversation about, or conversations about initiative fatigue and us trying to do too much. So this plan is is quite intentional in in really focusing in in two areas. One is professional culture, and and the other is instruct. So I hope this meets the the needs of of our colleagues in in being simpler and and more actionable. This also then becomes a basis for the school-based school improvement plans, which while normally those would be for three years, in a transition year with three new principals in the same year, I recommend that they do one-year plans and then come back to the group in in March, maybe April, with plans for the the next few years after that. So that affords them a little time and and context. And quite frankly, what I want them to do is very much aligned with this, which is build relationships with faculty and staff and and spend a lot of time in classrooms supporting learning and teaching. So the professional culture, and I won't read it all, because I'll just make everybody crazy, but lots of people, including the school committee and staff and administrators, have have identified professional culture as a focus area, connected to that, a lot of embedded things, but consistent, frequent communication, aligned decision-making, an outcome-based focus, and and consistency. And that's consistency across great subjects and buildings. So then, in each area, there's there's an objective, there's some activities, there's an identification of who's responsible, and and some some outcomes. So the overarching goal is to improve our our professional culture. And the first one's around clarity and utility of communications and and listing stakeholder voice and decision-making. The, and I'm happy to pause at any point or to go through it all and ask questions. Then there's one little blind spot on the other side of Sharon, I can't see Jason. So Jason, if you got something. The, a real commitment in Objective 1.2 for all the administrators to to do a lot more observing of classrooms, whether that's formal observation or informal observation, and and to give really clear feedback. I'm also committing to 90 minutes of observing classes in each building each week, right? Talk about like concrete, measurable goal. Principals are going to track their observations, I'll track my observations, and then, and we've even included a school committee member in this, we'll give you some some guidelines and protocols. And you don't have to do 90 minutes a week, but we'd love you to spend some time in classes because it gives you context. Writing clear objectives and measurable goals, and then and then reviewing them at the, throughout the year, but also at the end of the year. I shared with Steve in planning this meeting, we want to look at last year's or the last three years' district improvement plan. And ideally, we would have done that first before we went into this year's, but because of where we are with timing, for the principals to be able to share stuff with teachers in a week and a half, we need to do this first. But at our August meeting, we'll, in reverse order, do a little reflection on on the previous plan. And and then the last piece is is using the state supervision and evaluation system, that's the form of evaluation to to give people also really thoughtful feedback. There's also a neat thing that the happened in negotiations, we carved out some space to to frame some work around peer observations, and we're working with our attorneys, because the person who signs off on an observation has to be a licensed administrator. So we're trying to figure out how to see if we can deputize that so that thoughtful teachers with professional status can can share feedback with with their peers. And and that's interesting in a couple ways. It opens up classrooms to other people, and and it it's sort of, sort of unfair or selfish in a building with a principal and assistant principal, in the case of the high school, a principal and two assistant principals, that that the only people that are giving formal feedback to each other are those two or three people. Okay, let me pause there, that's that's a lot. Any questions or reactions to that?
In regards to goal 1.0, the activities, one of the things that we talked about, that's come up a number of times, is a district-wide calendar that's available to everybody, so that people aren't being scheduled in one school for a date that was taken by the high school for another thing. And I I know it's come up, it came up a lot when I was on the staff at at Monument. We never knew what was going on in the other schools, and the other schools never knew what was going on in ours. So I would think that that would be part of the, that there's a district-wide calendar that everybody can see.
Yeah, this is something we.
I think you tapped my phone with Steve today, we had the exact same conversation.
That that will be in the in the the, for most of our work now, we're using Google, right? And and most things are scheduled in Google calendars. As as we get a little farther with the the rollout of the district-wide website, all the schools' individual Google calendars will roll up into a district calendar. The 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 headache about this is your, your worst nightmare could come true, because there could then be four calendars that you're looking at simultaneously, which which could be a little overwhelming. But but we have plans to to do that. And then i- it's rare that, every once in a while it happens, but it's rare that people have kids across all three schools simultaneously, right? Sometimes it happens, happened to me, happened to you. You've got kids across two schools, a long come and go, Cory, eight kids, that's like across all three schools. But but people then will be able to to make their own calendar view that's specific to to what they want to do. So if you don't have a kid in middle school, and you don't want to see all their events, you can take that out. But staff planning things, we'll see, we'll see everything.
Yeah, what would be neat, because this discussion's happened for 27 years. What would we need is if we just did this?
Stop talking about it.
It's not talking.
We'd rather make a formal committee that was together for two years.
Yeah. We'd never be able to solve this problem, which seems as technology has evolved, it would make it easier, but somehow it's made it harder.
I know, we're we're knocking on the door.
Yeah.
I'll come back in five meetings with this result.
We'll give you six.
Yeah.
Any other questions on this first overarching goal or or reactions? And the other reaction that I like is the superintendent's advisory council. I think that's an excellent addition.
Yeah, that that came out of a whole range of conversations, and and it has happened informally through the years. I've also always met with the 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 union president and or the co-presidents when there were co-presidents, but but taking the time to do it, building by building, it will also be, it will also be.
What was interesting in negotiations, and part of it, we were able to be there, and not placing any blame, the meetings occurred, but they seemed to have agenda items that never got brought up. So it was like they would come to negotiations with legitimate questions, and say, you need to go see Peter, I thought you were meeting with him every two weeks, every month. So somehow, maybe having a formal agenda ahead of time, if you don't have that already, or something, but there seems to be, through no fault of anyone's, the meetings occurred, but some things just never got brought up.
Yeah, yeah, so we 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 can do that. In in my weekly check-ins, and sometimes more than we play with the the principals, we have this nice practice of having a a running log, you know, Google Doc, and I add agenda items to it, and they add agenda items to it, and then we take notes in it and mark things when they're complete. And if if occasionally we forget what we talked about, we have a record that that the principal and assistant principals that I can go back to.
My my comment on one, 1.0 section is, I really like the way.
My my comment on 1.0 session is I really like the way it's very concrete and very direct. It's 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 the easiest of the district group plans or stuff that I've ever read. I guess it goes through both of the sections, and it's not a bunch of edgespeak and 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 stuff that sounds like it was shut down or thrown by some grant provider, it's actually directly what goes our school audit is also.
Every every once in a while, right, a broken clock is right. Heard what he said, and and I did it. Some of these in the past have been sort of all these charts.
Yeah.
And this just seemed like this format may may be more sound. Anybody else on this first part? Okay, so let me go down to the the second part. And and this is around proficiency-based learning. There's a little definition of that because people get can get hung up on it. And and sometimes I just wish I didn't call it proficiency-based learning, just called it learning, right? And and talk from there, but but this is the language we're we're using now. So the first part is around, or so the whole thing is formalizing our structures and procedures around learning. And then and then the details of that follow. So so the first part is explaining it, sharing it in context, getting people on the same page around around language. At the very top of the thing, there's a there's a nice definition. And and it it's a it's a process, right? So there's instructional strategies, there are ways you assess people, there are approaches to grading, and things you hope that students learn and and demonstrate. As we go down to so 2.1, I talked about a little bit about some some professional development. The next part is is just to check in on on what we're teaching and what our curricula is, and at different points, we've done a lot of work on this. And and starting with the simple thing, lots of teachers write letters to students and parents or have a syllabi that explains what's happening in a class, and taking that and and going one level higher. We've done some significant work in a software platform called Atlas, and and much of that work is very solid and good, and some of it is outdated or just irrelevant and needs to be refreshed. So Colin in particular and I see that as a a place to to dig in. The the
I'm sorry, of those activities as described. How do those activities differ from regular numeric grades? I think you could say the same thing about numerical grades, would you not? You're going to share, you're developing syllabi, you're using them as a marker.
So that that didn't do in any context, but but I think what we're saying in simplest terms is is our curriculum needs to be shared and obvious and intentional. And whether you're doing a numerical grading system or proficiency-based grading system, that's a really foundational first step. And and then and then I think the the more nuanced stuff happens in in some of the other other steps. So it's your question's really a good one because it's it's sort of assessment. It doesn't matter what kind of assessment you use in saying what you're going to teach and share. At this level, it matters tremendously in later looks.
Just maybe add on kind of his comment, but I think it's important because we've had so much turnover in the administration. But my understanding is always literally articulated to me is that when we're talking about grading in proficiency-based learning, we're talking about how the teachers are reporting to the students on their work. Grading is not reporting out, reporting out is something entirely different. That is subject to policy IKAB, which concludes with major changes in the reporting system, not the grading system, shall be preceded by a cooperative study and evaluation by teachers, principals, parents, and the superintendent, and will submit the proposal to the school committee for consideration and approval. So we are not in any process that will change our transcripts and how they read in numerical.
Not yet, and if we were ever to get to that process, we would invoke that and and do that whole thing.
Yes. So that'd be it.
So I may come back to you with that for two or three years down the road.
Yes, I I love the way it's articulated on page thirteen of the handbook. And you apply that system for my cold bed.
Yes. Okay.
That sounds like a National Teachers Association model.
I I I would love for you to be on on one of those committees if they were ever.
I will be on.
And and then some connections over time across buildings. And then some some deep work around assessments. This is certainly interesting. The first set of things we were talking about around culture, I think we can really do a lot of work in one year. What's here is probably three, three, maybe four years worth of work, right? So taking stock of where we are and and red documenting some things, I think is reasonable in one year. Doing really deep work across the board for assessments in every class and every grade level is going to take some time. And that's also part of this notion of, and and I hope, I know there are lots of teachers on this meeting and that they hear me, it's part of slowing that down and not doing that too quickly or or frenetically. I'd rather figure out one or two good assessments a year, one in the winter and one in the spring than to try to do eight and do them poorly, right? And then two or three years down the road, then you have six or eight really good assessments, and 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 then you can start finding things.
And to me, I understand you said it earlier on, but to me, an important piece is this formalizing the structure and the buy-in. Because in some sense, it feels like the train left the station on some of this stuff without everyone on it. And then it was just a lot of catch-up and mixed.
Yeah, no, I think I think that's fair, I think we also should temper expectations, and there's always going to be some set of people who who don't want to get on the train or even question the train, but more people should be engaged and excited and and part of of making the train than is happening.
And I think the way this presented kind of presents a lot of need for reset too.
Well, and and this sort of this this unique opportunity, it's it's very unusual that that we have as many new leaders, or any district has as many new leaders as as we have and 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 I'm also, it it piqued me a little much, but I'm having some real opportunities around this. So this is a combination of of three new principals and me looking at this as a very different perspective and hearing a lot of feedback very clearly sets the stage for something really interesting. So questions, comments?
My only comment was in in relation to kind of what Bill was asking, is I I was a very early proponent of this. This is getting away, this is where some of the problems are. We have been so ingrained to a numerical system of grading, that you get a ninety-five, you know what that ninety-five is, we move on. And in proficiency-based learning, it's not just a grade. You have to be able to demonstrate beyond like a standardized test or a quiz or something. You have to be able to do much more demonstration, at least to me, of what you've learned. And it can be in any any sense of, it can be a project, it can be a poem, it could be a painting, it can be a recording. It doesn't have to be shown just because you took a piece of paper and were able to do a multiple choice quiz that you know what you're talking about. So I there's where I see the the beauty of proficiency-based learning. And again, it's my own bias that of being anti-stabilized test, is that this gives students who may not be able to do as well on a piece of paper, but have so many other abilities, like Cory's kids with poetry. I mean, your kids were good anyway, but to see another side of a student using poetry as a way to achieve many of the things that even in a math course you could do. And when I was at Springfield College, I had a student teaching a person across the hall from me, and he taught math using Jimi Hendrix's experience on how to teach rhythm. He taught math using that, using three-quarter time and all that. And his principal, this was way back in the dark ages, nineteen sixty-eight, sixty-nine, the principal wrote him up and said, that's terrible. You didn't teach, you're not teaching math the way you should. And he goes, if kids like it, and they can add and subtract, and they know how to keep time. And that's where I see proficiency-based learning.
Bill, would you also talk the thing, the other day you had a conversation and you were talking about the kind of feedback you got when you were in school?
Yeah.
And have, so like, one thing, there's the ninety-five or whatever, the eighty-seven, but but tell people about
Well, I had their comments. I had a school, I was I was told by my parents at public school, I was I was at Mount Everett and I wasn't doing well. I was cutting in class and shooting foul shots all the time. And so they pulled me out of a public school and put me into a prep school. I had a choice between a prep school and a military academy, and it was easy to choose between those two. And in the in the grading system, maternity penalty, and they still have it, every teacher had to write a grade, a numerical grade, but then had to write a comment. And so I was told, you know, I have weaknesses in math, and the teacher, Mr. Fenton, God bless him, he told me, he wrote down where my weaknesses were and what I have to work on. And that that was required of every teacher in in that system. And then you had a grading system that was based on effort. So I would get like a passing grade, I got a seventy in math, but I got a five in effort because the effort grade went for one, you didn't do anything, and five, you really worked hard. So I got seventy dash five for effort, and I continued that for the whole year. I ended up not doing well in math, but by the end of the year, I could put my comments together. And now I said, okay, what do I have to work on? And that was what I think proficiency-based learning is, well, I don't know. I don't know if the the principals agree, but this is where I think proficiency-based learning is headed. And it does take more time, but I think teachers would like it more because they give you a more well-rounded perspective of what your work is doing, so.
Brian, it's exciting, Bill's example of that, because I think it's sort of, it's on, it's on both sides, right? What what, how are young people demonstrating their understanding and how are are we as educators? All right, anything else on this? Motion, please.
Make motion that we approve the district improvement plan as stated.
On the second.
Second.
Motion by Bill, second, I am for the discussion. Darian, no one? Roll call, we'll vote. Diane?
Yes.
Jason?
Hi.
Bonnie?
Hi.
Sarah? Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
She said yes.
I was doing pretty good, I guess I got late.
Yeah.
I don't hear it, it's a good thing.
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I. So the next thing, Christopher, why don't you come up? We're going to share the additional update on the leveling up work. And and Christopher put together some some notes that he wants to share. And then and then folks have reactions.
So a few notes, I'll go through it slowly, and certainly feel free to interrupt or ask questions if you have any. I just want to start with, I absolutely believe that as a community, we're all aligned with our desires and our expectations that we have for our students, who care deeply about them. We want to provide a rich, rewarding, and rigorous education for all of them. And so really, the rigor is a big focus for us at the high school. Our goal is to focus on rigorous instruction. This will be the common through line in our professional work throughout the year. You know, some some ways to think about rigor in a classroom, because it does mean many things. But a few ways are an environment where students are expected to learn at high levels, are supported in doing so, and they can demonstrate learning, demonstrate that learning. Setting high expectations while balancing the complexity of the content and students' cognitive engagement, and making sure that the content is accessible to all schools. Within this framework of rigor, we find several things that have been initiatives at the high school for, you know, much longer than I've been around. We find differentiation, honors distinction, and proficiency-based teaching and learning. It's not exclusive to to just those items, but those items are included in it. So what exactly are we going to do in order to improve rigor? We're actively meeting with and listening to teachers, that began as soon as I got here. These conversations have been formed our organizational planning for the year. And we will be providing instructional planning time and opportunities to support teachers in meeting the needs of all schools. So during our meeting in PD time, we have PD time, eight, eight half-days, and then we have two meetings a month. You know, traditionally, the first faculty meeting, the first meeting of a month is a faculty meeting, right? So what I'm going to be working very hard to do is reduce that time, the time needed for such a meeting, you know, to free up, that's two hours, two meetings, two hours, to free up as much of those two hours to continue this work so we can access as much of the time as we have at our disposal. So the teachers can collaborate as a teaching community under the leadership of two main groups, and those are the instructional leads and the department coordinators, and of course, I shouldn't say three groups, the administration. So that they can focus on a few areas of teaching and learning. To the extent possible, the administration is committed to reducing things that we focus on. I heard Peter say the same about the district improvement plan. And it's something that has been very clear as as I've spoken with people, as I've learned about schools, I've learned about what's going on, we really need to hone in on the best we can, one area of focus. Now, that has a variety of tentacles, it reaches out in different places among kinds of initiatives, but if we're focusing on that one area now, we've reduced in a way, and and we're we're diligent about about accomplishing this one thing. To get back to my bullet points here. Again, utilizing PD and meeting time and aligning teams, and instructional improvements by content area and planning time, we hope to effectively scale down and condense our work. The intention is to meet our school goals and outcomes focused on instructional improvements. Of course, we're going to continue to support our media students through additional tutoring, reading, ESL specialists. Administrators are, you know, and this is on me and and the leadership that I provide, the expectations that I provide, we intend on being very visible in classrooms. We will be participants in meetings in a PD time. Our approach is as colleagues and collaborators to raise the bar for all of us in order to bring the best for our students. Still going. The instructional leads have been, they're going to continue their same structure basically of the work that they have. But they have ninety-minute planning meetings each week, and they meet with a group for one period each week, okay? That all is going to stay the same, and their focus is going to be instruction. So those groups are across disciplines, so it has to be, it can't be about math. It has to be about something that everybody sees, feels, does, whatever. So they're going to engage in instructional rounds with a particular focus. So Peter said earlier, he spoke to the idea of having folks observe each other. Instructional rounds are an observation of another teacher with feedback to that teacher. Instructional rounds are what are we seeing as a school community, what are we doing in our own practice, how can we improve that? And they'll take, this is an example, one topic, and use that for their instructional rounds, and then come back the next week and discuss what did we see, how can we improve, what are we doing in our own practice. Honors distinction, pardon me, eminent and effective instruction, they'll be, you know, looking at those, we're not slamming it all at once, have to be by piece. Habits of work, and I believe, Bill, you were speaking to that in a way just a little earlier. And and certainly questioning, questioning is a big thing, you know, how are we talking to our kids, what are we expecting of them? And I think probably most of you understand that Luke's backside on any test. And I think probably most of you understand the blue specs on any testimony and how we, how we bring rigor and, uh, you know? Higher thinking, uh, three questions. The department coordinators', um, work is going to shift a little bit. So there's a departmental focus on instruction. I don't think that's exactly been there, um, in the recent past. But they're going to be leaders during meeting time and during PD time. Again, they're going to focus on a variety of areas across the year. Each department will attend to what is most important within their department. So I think it's, um, you know, it's. Basic to recognize that departments are going to be in different places where they are with a variety of initiatives that we have going on. And, and with their ability to enact different things and what they need to do. So, um, we're going to work with the department coordinators for a place to begin. That may, there's, here's areas in no particular order and may not be limited to rigor. Which would, I would, I just put a great scene, rich dynamic, engaging focus, instruction, honors distinction, you know? Do we have, uh, do we have a common expectation around that within a department? How about across, you know, one class? If multiple teachers are teaching a class, we need to have a common understanding of what that means. Will, how are we approaching leveling up or de-leveling? The expectation is that we're approaching it from the top. You know, we're not starting from the bottom, we're starting from the top and figuring out how to, how to bring everybody along with us through, um, different instruction efforts. Proficiency based learning, common assessments, common goals, um, and curriculum method. It's a lot right there. Um, so we have a lot of work in front of us and as I said, you know, different departments are going to, are going to start in the place that makes the most sense. Or, or perhaps is the most urgent need. School administrators, we need to know what's happening in our classrooms. So we're going to be visible in classrooms, we'll be collaborators during PD and meetings. We need to understand what the students are doing, what they're learning. And, uh, we're going to obviously make changes as needed to support our trajectory. We've heard from teachers that seeing examples of shifts in teaching, in other words, towards where we're heading would be beneficial. And we're going to work to have colleagues model and demonstrate a range of instructional approaches. We're confident that these supports, uh, that through these supports, we can, uh, we can improve rigor. And, um, certainly going to be back around here, I will be at the school committee meetings to, to work back to you all on how things are going. It's a, frankly, it's a tall order, but, uh, I'm up for the work. I look forward to it. It's, uh, the most rewarding work.
Chris, can you, um, focus these efforts on early, early stage teachers, young new teachers?
Be involved, of course.
Um, who may need a little more help of getting to the levels we want. And, and not just early or young new teachers. But even, uh, experienced teachers who may not be getting it. How do you, how do you, uh, kind of address the specific issues around individual teachers who may or may not be? Handling rigor the way you want.
It, it depends on, you know, what the issue is. And in some cases, frankly, it's, it's. We're telling them, you know, what's that, right? Um, you know, there's been some different examples that, that people have shared with me and I don't want to make, you know, go on about that right now. But, um, we have to understand the deficiencies and then we have to be direct and, and working with them. Let's say there was a whole department that was struggling with something and a department coordinator said, Christopher, you know, we're really starting this thing. Now we're going to have extra hands on, you know, it'd be me or it'll be, um, other supports we have available. Um, Colin Chivar, Beth Cook, you know, um, there are a couple of instructional lead positions that we'll be leading on as well. The new teachers. Probably have been trained on some of this because that's what, uh, which piece of program they're providing now. But it, you know, to the extent that they're not, they're not ready, we're going to approach it just the same way. Again, they'll have mentors, um, and, um, and they'll also, I hope, have some support through district personnel. So that's just the ones that I named. Folks who are, okay, folks who are leading us. Are on board, you know, and they understand where we're at within departments or within our own skills. And, um, and I'm going to be meeting with them regularly in order to hear from them and chart that path forward.
And I don't know if I answered your question. Well, that's good. Uh, do all new teachers have mentors?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I designed it.
Yes, we, and, and news is sort of funny word, like I, I met with somebody today who taught for sixteen years. So she gets a mentor, but it's a very light touch mentor in relation to understanding the systems and like. Elysocratic things about Yorkshire Hills. But she likely doesn't need a lot of coaching around classroom management because she's coming to us doing sixteen years of experience, right? Somebody in their, in their first few years will, will get really a lot of support from a mentor. But depending what kind of preparation program they came out of, or, it, it's really interesting how, um. People's needs and supports aren't monolithic at all. And, and there's some folks who are inexperienced who need supports in some ways, but not in others. Maybe they really get technology, but, but, but juggling with, uh, or juggling assessments and making sense of that is, is really challenging. Uh, the other, I was just going to add is, is one of the things we have to try to do a better job of. Is, is leaning on colleagues who are doing very strong work to share and model those practices. Cause some of the feedback we got is it's, it's one thing to, to hear about something. And it's another thing to, to see it in action and to model it. So in, in every department, every grade, there are significant numbers of teachers who get. All our parts of where we're hoping to get to, and we can lean on that to share that. Other questions? Anyone else?
Um, I was just going to comment on, um, and, and Bill, uh, Christopher, you and I talked about this when I met with you. In regards to the, the ninth and tenth grade in this leveling up is the area that is of concern.
Yes.
Um, we, we know that because of the number of kids that sign up for AP in their junior year. Um, and then their senior year, because Tara and Kat was telling me she has fifty-four kids in her senior AP classes, which is immense. So problems are in ninth and tenth grade. And, and I have two comments to make. One is, um, the humanities are different than the sciences. Okay. And you have an undergraduate degree in literature and understand that writing an essay on Shakespeare is a lot different than doing a lab experiment essay.
Hundred percent.
Okay. Um, so I think that has to be brought up. And it's nice to have consultants come in and, and, um, I, I, we discuss this and, and tell you how to do things. But as I, as I, I worked as a construction person, a gopher in my years of college, uh, in the summer. And I never forgot a master carpenter who said to me, you know how you hang a door? And I went, no, I have no idea. He goes, well, I won't tell you, I'll show you. And he showed me how to hang a door. I, I forgot how to hang a door, but it didn't matter. He, he took me and he said, this is how you do it. This is what I think is needed in humanities at Monument, the ninth and tenth grade. Now, I don't know how a consultant would be able to come in and teach a class, but I, I think what you've, I, I like what you've said in regards to other teachers model. Uh, social studies has excellent, Ted Collins is excellent. Ted Collins could demonstrate how, how he works differentiated learning in his advanced classes. Because he doesn't just have honors students. Uh, Gordy Soul is another who could do it. So there's that.
I'll be sure to ask him right away.
Yeah, so, well, don't mention my name.
He's recording.
So, so that's one aspect of it. Because in differentiated learning, how do you use a book with kids who are barely able to read? Kids who are just new to the English language, kids who are at grade level and kids who could read a book in two weeks. Okay. And you have all those in one class.
Yeah.
And, and that's the issue, I think, that many teachers that I've talked to find. The other thing is in order to differentiate it really well, I think we have to devote the financial resources to it also. Jason, uh, has also brought up class size. And class size is really important. And I'm looking at the class sizes in the memo that Peter sent us. And I'm pleased that the class sizes and the humanities are very reasonable. I think it has to be kept that way, but we also have to look at the financial impact. And instead of saying, well, we're going to use all choir in the Western Front with everybody. Well, maybe we need to buy another source that's all quiet in the Western Front that may be a, um, I don't want to say a, like a Cliff Notes. For some kids, but that's going to cost money. And so what I would hope to see in the budget for at least the humanities in, at Monument would be an increase in not just textbooks. But other sources that are mentioned here in regards to novels, documents, uh, short stories. Uh, that's going to be needed and that's going to cost. And I think in order for this to be successful, class sizes have to be reduced or, or kept where they are. Increased resources for all of those classes. And it means maybe using two different resources in the same class.
Okay, very well. Should.
And, you know, so there's that angle. And then, um, and then bringing kids and saying, this is what we expect. And I said at a previous meeting that with the, with the rubrics and everything, I think we should tell. The parents and, and, and our, our constituents, there are going to be kids that aren't going to reach this in four years. And they may not walk across the stage in ten years. Because we are going to stick to this. And it seems that we are. This is five, six, seven years in the making. We're on a, on a track. And yet we happen to know that there are some kids that aren't going to make it. We have to have the guts enough to say that. We will do everything in our power to help those. But at some point, we have to say, we got to move on. So there's that angle too. Okay? So I, I appreciate what you said tonight. Um, I'm just very concerned about the ninth and tenth grade. And as you asked me the question, I did not have an answer to, what are we going to do about it? And I went. I kind of threw my hands up, but.
Well, if I can respond.
Yes.
Um, I agree with you one hundred percent about what you're saying regarding the resources in classrooms. I, um, always make it very clear to the teachers that I work with that just ask for it, please. You all are the experts. You know what's needed. And I try to never say no. And I think that's something, I don't think, I know that. Just based on a month, not even a month and a half in this district, um, the district is very supportive financially of the schools. And, uh, and, you know, I know how to make my way around a budget and find where there is money. And, and I've never been part of a school or in charge of a budget that was zero at the end of the year. You know, there's always money there. So just figure out where it is and, and leverage your resources. But I agree also a hundred percent that we need to have, um, a number of resources. Maybe it's all quiet on the Western Front. Um, but how are we helping all the kids access the ideas behind it? It's, it's not just the words in the book.
Right.
Let's access the ideas and the thought and wrestle with that. Because if you have a lower reading level, there's still like, that you can wrestle with those thoughts. Um, so that, um, you know, there was a teacher that met with me who said, uh. You know, we really need to be starting at the top and figure out how to support all of our students. And she spoke about, you know, varying resources in order to make that happen. So it's hard work for sure, but that's where we're heading.
That's good.
I've never seen a school committee turn down the request that we were needed for educational things. You know, or my, I'm on it. And so it, that is an issue.
You're making sharing very uncomfortable.
That's true.
Then when you come back and say, no, cut.
Then, then we turn something else back.
And the other thing, the other thing I'd like to say is, um, in regards to improve rigor. Um, and this, this has been something that I've been concerned with for a couple of years, is we offer USAP. And I think the, uh, the emphasis should be on making US history AP, a push, as the kids call it.
Yep.
Available to sophomores. Because that would help kids who, um, go through history one. I noticed that we're, we're going to do a pilot program this year with the Khan Academy. Okay. But that means the kids are still taking US history two. They ought to be given the option at the end of the freshman year, either I want to take US history two or AP US. And I see no reason.
I agree with you. I think we got a, I think that's a separate, I mean, I know it's totally related, but I'd like to maybe like. In October, November, have some kind of like discussion about like a planning session on that. I agree.
Okay.
Well, I want to increase our AP, our AP offerings, both down to sophomore year and the scope of it. I don't know that I have all the answers to it. I mean, the AP tells you that, that you should be doing AP year, key in history sophomore year. That's what their recommendation is. I'm not saying they're right. There's a lot of ideas about it, but I think we should hold on to that idea and start having that conversation like I told.
My only two thoughts, I'm not a fan of Jason APs. And in my book, I only want APs where we've got teachers that are ready and willing and excited about teaching them. So that would be one point. And with the whole Khan Academy idea, I'm a fan of using technology to support learning. You know, we talk, we'll go with the all choir on the West Front. You know, if somebody's having problems reading it, maybe there's an audio book that they're following along with while they read. Because sometimes that can help people that are subject to.
More resources available.
Potentially, but that's the way to use technology. What I don't want to see is using technology as a substitution. Uh, I, my kids have gone through classes where it was completely online and there was check-in and it. It doesn't work. It's just not a substitute for, for in-person teaching. And so that's where I have a trouble undersing. Um, and the only other thing I'd like to say, I know it's a time for public comment, but if we've got teachers on the line, if there's, can we give them the opportunity to talk?
Well, when the school committee's done briefly. Anne, go ahead.
I certainly disagree with, there's some kids who aren't going to make it. We put a lot of sports in place to get all kids across that finish line.
And we're not setting ourselves where those kids aren't. No, I, I don't.
And I'm amazed at how much resources going to getting some kids across finish line.
Um, and due to resources, it's amazing the commitment of the teachers and the creativity and hard work and the dedication. It's really. It's amazing. And, and, and we do have a nice tradition of meeting young people where they are. And every year there's some small number of students who graduate in three years. And, and most students graduated in four years and some students graduate in, in five years, right? Occasionally people take six years to graduate. And, uh, and I really appreciate that we, we take the time to, to meet students. Yeah, I'll take brief comments from the bullet Christopher laid into the meeting with a lot of this, just raise your hand. Okay, I don't see anyone, so let's, okay. Move ahead.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
So the next one is just going to be a quick update and I'm going to come back the next few more on this. We have a standing, uh, bullet item for, uh, DPIV, diversity of the inclusion of belonging. Uh, we've run a search for our, our next director of DPIV. Uh, and I'm sad to say that that appears to be an unsuccessful search. So I've started conversations with Carlos Biato, who's the executive director of MGLC. And we've worked with him for years on other stuff. And at our next meeting, I'll, I'll come back with, with a, a better articulated plan. Around what opposing we do, uh, for one transitional year. While we, um, uh, take the time to, to do a, a, a longer search to try to get the, the right person. And, and, and the highest level, it's, it's, um, going back to, to a lot of what's articulated in Stoke report. Uh, and, and leaning on, uh, partners and consultants in a number of areas. And also leaning, uh, on our own staff, uh, in a, in a deeper way to provide support. Uh, for a range of affinity groups in each building. Uh, today Jake and I have like a very positive meeting, uh, with a, a, a number of parents around some. Boys, uh, to, to support more students. So I'll come back the next meeting with, with some more detail. The next thing, and this is complicated and I'll lean on Cory and Steve on this to a good degree. We have second readings for a number of policies. And, uh, we have some first readings for others to give a little context for particularly the people who don't live this every day. We work really closely with NASC, which is the school committee group, um, to look at our policies. And occasionally, um, we, we take their model policies or really quite often their model policies. Occasionally our attorney writes other policies in part because NASC is a bigger organization and it can take them a little longer to catch up. And then every so often, we have our own policies that deviate in a really enhanced versions of what either NASC or, or, or our attorneys would, would provide. The last several months, the policy subcommittee has done a lot of work on instructional materials, reconsideration of instructional resources, selection and management of library and media resources, and complaints about employees and or curriculum and instructional materials. They also reviewed the early childhood entry age. Oh, this is the other thing I should mention. Every once in a while, we have something that's, that's tied to federal law or shift in state law that we essentially adopt whole cloth because we need to do that to be in compliance. After this, and Rob's been really supporting the policy work, we're recommending some for second readings and we can go through each of those and review changes as necessary. And then we can secondarily look at some for first readings. This is, this is super complicated and I'm sorry about it. It's really technical work, but it's also, it's also quite important.
So let me, why don't we go through each of the second readings.
Right.
First, most of these we went through the last meeting. You'd have them for two weeks or more. So let's, or just give a high level, a higher level overview. And I think we're probably going to have to vote on these separately. I think so. Typically we don't, but I think we're going to have to. It's a little, Jason, what do you think?
I think separately, yeah.
So if it's okay, or do you want me to watch this?
That's fine.
So the first one would be instructional materials, which is IJ. People sometimes ask me, what do those letters mean? They're arbitrary, but they, I mean, they're not a thin air, but they're set by NASC. Right? So IJ is instructional materials. And if you looked at any policy book or online policy manual in public schools in Massachusetts, instructional materials would likely be IJ. So this doesn't have significant changes. The, the school committee is struck out and district is written in. And then at the bottom, there's this thing that once something has been adopted, the decision will not be reconsidered for a period of three.
Because IJR, right?
So does that mean we won't look at it again for three years even if it's a total failure in year one?
No, it doesn't mean that.
I didn't think it would, but I. It's IJ.
IJ, just plain IJ. So Anne, if someone appeals, Cory may be able to explain about, someone appeals, another group can appeal two weeks later and continue that, that this is going to be in place.
Well, that's different though, because this is just for instructional.
Okay, that's true.
That's for the reconsideration piece. So I think that's separate.
So explain this one.
Yeah, I think this is just about what is being presented with some more curriculum related.
It's just weird that it says that once it's adapted, you can't reconsider for three years. I got it, the thing about somebody complaining, but that's not what this is.
Well, I mean, I hate to say it, the version I'm looking at doesn't have.
It's this, it's what's added.
I don't think, my point is, I don't think it's supposed to be there. I, I think unfortunately, in an effort to read on documents, things have gotten confused. So I have that statement on IJR, which goes into reconsideration of instructional resources.
I, I would just recommend a strike.
Yep.
Motion to strike the final paragraph beginning with after the district.
Second. Any other discussion? Roll over. Bill.
Hi.
Anne.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane. Cory.
Hi.
Rich.
Yes.
And myself. I have a motion to approve I, policy IJ.
Motion to approve policy IJ as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Bill.
Hi.
Anne.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane. Cory.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
And I. IJR. So right ahead, Rover's going to explain that.
Yes, so the, the responsibility to challenges in this is, is change from the school committee to the standing materials review committee. And the formation and composition of that committee is detailed in KEC, which, which we'll get to later. A side note that, that references the Mass General Law on this is section, section 50 says, a change may be made in school books used in public school by a vote of two-thirds of the whole school committee at a meeting thereof, notice of such intended change having been given at a previous meeting. So it's, it's an unusual clause, but, but if for some reason.
So in regards to the policy, we have some statutory right under Mass General Law to make changes if we want.
Right. You just have to follow the procedures.
And we're not dealing up that right by adopting this policy.
You're not.
That's, that's two important things.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion on policy IJR?
Motion to approve policy IJ dash R.
Second.
I have a motion by Rich and second by Bill. Discussion.
Again, it's the same thing, well, it's different. This one says that you won't have it for a period of three years, but then when you get to the policy KEC, it's five years. So reason why it's five years, you want it to be three years.
Yeah, my, my understanding is that these are for curriculum and when we get to the other ones, it's more specific materials. It's like a specific.
So IJR, any other questions? We have a motion and a second. Bill.
Hi.
Anne.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane. Cory. Rich.
Hi.
And I, unanimous. Okay. Next would be IJL.
Right. So IJL is library and media materials selection. So the, a couple of changes, the, it's really formatting. The thoughts expressed in the original first paragraph have been moved to the objective section because the subcommittee considered the statement fit better into that section. Right? So this is the red cross tab versus the, the other red. There are two additions, link in videos and that sort of reflects the changing types of materials that we're using. Like when the first policy, or the first version of this was written, those were, were available, right? Microfiche and I don't know what else. So there's that. And then the last change is adding Kirkus reviews instead of Form Book. And we discussed this at the last meeting.
There are a motion on IJR.
Motion to approve IJR.
Second.
I have a motion by Rich and a second by Bill. Vote. Discussion.
I just want to point out, all of these were done in conjunction with Cara, Stunt and Jennifer. Librarians at the high school.
Anyone else? Roll over. Bill, vote.
Hi.
Anne.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Diane. Cory.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
And I. Next would be IJLA, the Library and Media Center Resource Management.
So really the only change is the title. And that was, or the recommended change is to reflect the current state of library media centers.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to JLA.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll over. Bill, vote.
Hi.
Anne.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Diane. Cory.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
And I. That's, next would be JEB, Early Childhood Entering Ages.
So the only change here is a housekeeping change to recognize the mountainside preschool and Beatricey policy. And this is intentional because it's advantageous for us to formally recognize the preschool and to, to count their, in doing so, we count their enrollment as part of our total enrollment.
There are a motion.
Motion to approve policy JEB.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. Bill.
Hi.
Anne.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane. Cory.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
And I. JEB complaints about district employees.
Right. So the two changes, the word public comes out, it's just complaints. And if a complaint is made about the superintendent, the school committee chair develops procedures around that. Because I can't, I mean, I commit to the president. It's problematic on many levels.
There are a motion.
Motion to approve policy KEB.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Bill, vote.
Hi.
Anne.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Cory.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
And I, unanimous. And the last one, or second, is policy KEC, complaints about curriculum or instructional materials. And KEC dash E, request for reconsideration of classroom library materials.
So this is our, our policy with the most extensive proposed revisions. Library is added to the title. A statement about providing opposing sides of controversial topics was added. The formation and composition of a standing materials review is defined. The procedure for dealing with complaints about curricular and instructional materials, completion of a request for consideration form, the fact that material stays in use and the guidance for the review committee has been added. A similar process for complaints about library materials has been added. And KEC dash E, and E stands for exhibit, has been updated to provide more information for the standing materials review committee. I anticipate that there may be questions about this or, or additional discussion.
Questions? I'd like to talk about the first red one on KEC. In accordance with the district policy of providing instructional materials on opposing sides of controversial issues. I'd like to change the wording on that. I'd like to change the wording to providing instructional, providing balanced instructional material on controversial issues. I don't like the idea of opposing sides of controversial issues because I think it opens up areas that we don't want to get into. Opposing sides of the Holocaust, so we have to have deniers come in and talk about why they deny that even happened. We have to deal with evolution. So we have to present the creationist viewpoint that we, in science, talk about vaccines. So we have to immediately bring in information and stuff that does not agree with vaccinations. And because it's an opposing side, I think following the words in policy IJ number one, which uses the word balance, this gives a, to me, a more rounded approach. So I would like to change the wording to providing balanced instructional materials on controversial issues.
Or any comments?
I felt some people with that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll over. Whoa. Bill.
Hi.
Anne.
Yes.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane. Cory.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
And I, unanimous.
My second thing I'd like to talk about is the makeup of the committee, the makeup of the SMRC. The last meeting, Rich expressed in his view that we don't need non-educators. And I kind of fought back. Well, I didn't fight back, I just discussed it with him. And I, I have come after this period of time to think that Rich is right. I don't think we should have.
Is that, is that in the minutes?
How long you been on the, really do the first?
I, I think we should admit the parent, the school committee and the students. I think for the reason Rich stated, this is a job for professional educators. It shouldn't be left to people in the public to make and, and to review material and make recommendations. We hire a staff, we have trust in that staff, and that's what we should do in regards to this matter. I would also like it though, included that the person making the complaint must be present at the meeting as a non-participant. Okay?
So must is very strong.
Pardon me?
Must is very strong. I would think the principal who's chairing this could make that decision. There are probably cases where that's appropriate, but cases where that may not be appropriate.
How about something, the fact that if, if the, if the complaint fails to appear at the hearing, the committee may just, may, not must, may dismiss the complaint without hearing.
Well, I would like, I think I understand your gag. Maybe if asked by the principal of the committee, then the complaint must come. But to give, but to give away.
And I guess I would.
Cory, go ahead.
I think two things, because we quickly kind of went down the rabbit hole of trying to lay everything out and figure on every contingency, et cetera. And so I think some, what we need to keep in mind is what we want to be policy and what we want to be procedure. And in understanding that.
My second thing is procedure.
Right. And so potentially, and, and then to your point, Bill, which was Rich's original point. Because I wasn't at the meeting, but I listened back to the meeting and I kind of racked my brains thinking, did we just like come up with that as a good idea or was this a best practice? And so I went back to the librarians to ask them. And this is something that was picked up from the ALA and what they recommend for these kinds of consideration committees. So these policies are not broadly rolled out in a lot of schools, but it's something that more and more libraries and librarians are trying to put in place for the exact reason that we encountered. And a lot of the best practices around have a committee placed before something happens so that it is a standing and it's not appointed kind of after the fact or how the complaint comes in. If the superintendent is the one that's hearing the final hearing decision, make sure that it's the principals that are creating the committees. And in terms of the composition, they did say diversity, the more diversity you can have on a committee is good. And that includes putting in people like parents or community members or school community member. Some situations is student. But that the more that you've got people, and they're probably a happy number. And one thing that came out was whatever it is, make the committee a non-number of people so that you don't have to tie it over. And I think that might be something that we want. Maybe that's actual policy as opposed to procedure. I don't know. We can talk about that. But that somewhere in the seven to nine range of people coming in from mixed backgrounds and having different from one view is actually good in terms of having discussion. In a conversation I had with Jennifer today, she was on the training this afternoon. She said that people say some of the most incredible discussions happen in these types of things because they, people come in thinking one thing and leave with an entirely new kind of perspective on it. So.
So why don't we do the world book section? Everything we do, math curriculum. Why don't we have, why don't we have all the yahoos get on Zoom? we have, why don't we have all the yahoos get on Zoom, tell us how to teach math? I mean, where does, I mean, where does it stop that the, that the public is, tell educators how to do their job? And this seems to be like the, if we're ever going to experiment with that, it seems to be the last place to start, not the first.
Didn't the legislature pass something in the spring about this, where, where they said that the role of educators is the educated when it gets into issues of curriculum and instructional materials, it should be educators that are making the decision?
I'm sure, I've read something with the legislature.
Again, if it's in opposition, that it could be done where between, puts a ball between educators that are on it, the other people would never have an overwhelming vote. Like if, if the educators are all aligned, they are still going to.
Well, that was.
Come out with the majority of their decision.
Yeah.
So.
And just know, I mean, I'm representing, I don't know if any of the librarians are on the phone tonight. If they are, they could jump in. But I'm, I'm representing what, what they suggested, what their training is showing.
You want me to make, you want Bill to make a motion?
Yeah, I want a motion.
What about non-voting members?
Well.
They could be, the public could be members of the committee, but non-voting.
And have a.
So that way they're at the meetings, they're hearing the back and forth. But the voting, the actual decision-making is made by educators.
So that would be a procedure.
I mean, I think everyone has an opportunity to be heard here. Like, parents have a concern. This, this whole thing is about like giving access to complaint procedure, to give access to the public to have their opinions heard. Doesn't make them decide. It just means they have an opportunity to be heard.
I think.
I mean, a parent, a parent has a concern about anything. This is giving them more power than they have under any other policy in our whole district. And they can actually, they get a formal adjudication of their complaint, of what it may be. And I, I, I trust our educators to listen to the public and address the public's balancing. I think they do that in all their education decisions, all the time, on everything they do.
Let's try that.
Yeah. Do you want me to make a motion, Bill, or do you want?
Yeah, you make it.
All right. I make a motion that we strike the portion of paragraph three that says a parent, a school committee member, and a student if age appropriate.
Second.
Discussion.
So, so then you're not going to have anybody other than the professional staff?
Or what if it's let up where it's not, it says something like, the principal will serve as the chairperson, which will consist of the building librarian and teachers slash professional staff. It may also be included. So it leaves it up to the, the principal to decide if they want to include anyone else on the committee.
But don't forget this committee's forming in September. So they would have to make that decision before there was ever a complaint.
Could we amend it to include what Bill just said? That a parent, school committee member, and, and student at age appropriate may be on the committee, but only as a non-voting member.
So I have a motion and a second. Okay.
Do you want to amend that?
So let me, so these. So this is not a publicized subject to be of the meaning, or correct?
No. And that's why the principals, that's not a meeting.
Yeah.
Or you, as a committee. Yeah. There's nothing to do with us. The policy has to do with us.
Yeah.
Do I offer that as an amendment?
You, you can.
Okay. Well, I offer as an amendment to that, that we include parent, a school committee member, and a student if age appropriate, be on the committee, may be on the committee, but as non-voting members.
Do I have a second to the amendment?
Second.
Okay, so.
And I withdraw my amendment, and we'll go with that amendment.
Oh.
Or you, he's amending my amendment.
Yeah, but you can do that, because we'll vote on the first amendment, then we'll vote on yours.
Okay.
So we're voting on the amendment?
So Rich's amendment would strike the parent, school committee member, and student if age appropriate. Bill's would slightly change that and would make it only as a non-voting number.
So. And he said may, my ears.
Yeah.
It's not necessary.
The principal thinks.
Yeah.
So let's go, we'll start with the second amendment, which is may add a parent, a school committee member, and a student if age appropriate. And just so everyone understands, if this passes, it does make Rich's inconsequential, because we've already added this one.
Right. But just to.
Do you want to withdraw law? Do you want me to make one?
Yes. Yeah, that'd be fun.
Okay.
To clarify, is the tail end of it as non-voting members?
Yes.
Let me, let's, let's try another one.
Yeah.
All right. I'll go ahead, Sarah.
I was just wondering, do you have a sense of how the librarians?
I mean, I spoke to them hours before the meeting, and they, they were okay with making it. And basically, what their, their recommendation was to leave it as, obviously, every committee is going to have a building librarian and teachers and professional staff, and then leaving, leaving the rest up to discretion. So it didn't have to include all of those things, but could. But they certainly still thought that it should be with voting privileges.
So all motions have been withdrawn. Rich, go ahead.
I move that we strike a parent, a school committee member, and a student if age appropriate, and replace it with the principal may appoint a parent, a school committee member, and a student age appropriate as non-voting members of the committee.
Second.
So we have a motion, a second by Bill. He picked the one. Any other discussion? Maybe a roll call vote. Bill vote.
Hi.
Anne.
Yes.
Jason, hi. Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yeah.
Cory.
No.
Rich.
Yes.
And none. Okay, that passed by eight to two. Let's continue.
I have a, on page, KEC, page 2X and 37. An individual may only bring one challenge to one material at a time. I would like to know, will one individual be able to file an unlimited amount of challenges using one new material for each challenge?
But this doesn't anticipate that, and that's a really good question.
Because, and I take that from Florida, where there is one woman who has filed 168 complaints against a school district, and she continues to do that. And of course, in Florida policy, I think that's just hunky order.
Cory, do you want to?
I'm on the top of page. Which says an individual may only bring one challenge to one material. And at the end, number seven, an individual may only bring one challenge to one material at a time.
And your point is that one individual could bring other challenges to other.
Other materials. Every time they, and they lose a challenge, they pick another thing, and pick another thing, and pick another thing, filibuster the committee.
And, and I base that on, on stuff that has happened throughout the country.
How do we, I mean, is there a free speech issue here? I realize that's harassing and really annoying. But can it be dismissed very quickly? The second, the fourteenth, the thirty-fourth, the sixty-eighth, the committee says no, and we move on to next agenda. Are you, must you, you have some other ancillary things, is serial challenges may be dismissed by the chairman or by the committee, or something like that?
Yeah.
Sir? I think it's hard. Somebody could have two legitimate challenges.
Right.
But two different materials.
Right. But thirty-seven challenges is probably, nearly problematic.
But I'm not saying it can't happen, because it has to.
But it can happen. But my, I think the concern that I hear from Bill is, is about the right to free speech and have those. When do you, where do you draw the line in the same, three, five, seven? I mean, I'm, I'm not in favor of doing it. But I don't know where you can draw on.
It's a real tough balance.
Yeah. And I can't believe the Florida people will listen intently to this complainer, go on for 10 minutes about their complaint. They're going to say, this is the fourth, the forty-first complaint. The answer is no. And we move on.
I think the serial challenges may be dismissed by the committee chair and just leave it out, because people have assumptions. This person really is opposed to three different things. That makes sense. But if they're just picking, picking randomly, I mean, every book on the shelf.
Right. I like that. Serial challenges can be, will be dismissed by the.
They can be dismissed by one individual or by the same individual?
Yeah. My concern with that is, there's enough people out there that, I'm not sure, whatever we put in here, is going to make a difference. They're, they'll find someone to challenge with a second person and a third person, which is the reason why we have three and five years on individuals. So if one book is challenged, it's bound to be okay. Another person can challenge that same book, and we continue to do that with thirty-seven people.
You definitely identified a problem, Bill, but maybe the, maybe we do a wait-and-see approach on it. And if the problem comes up, it's our policy. And if the superintendent or the principal goes back to us and says, this isn't working, then we readjust. Because I just don't know. I guess, yeah. But Boy's got a very good point.
Yeah. And in the meantime, it would be interesting to get legal advice if this comes up. So we know if we actually can do that, we may not be able to. I would be hesitant to change it tonight.
Okay.
Other changes of this. On the form, I would like to have the, the striking out as representing an organization or name of an organization. I would not like that striked out. I would like that to be included.
We don't want an organization or a name of an organization, or this is only going to be brought by an individual.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That, that was.
Intentional.
That was intentional.
Okay. Good.
Just there were, I had a list of groups that would be.
All right. Well, they're not coming. Because they're not on the form.
Yeah, good. But I'm sorry.
Very happy. Other, other concerns, questions, comments?
So these are some edit, editing, editing things. I'm, I'm, on the first page, under the third paragraph, the third line in the third paragraph, but recognize that at times of reevaluation of certain material, period. It doesn't make sense.
Where, where are you?
First page.
Yeah.
Third paragraph. School committee will not permit you to enjoy a group to exercise censorship over instructional materials and library collections, but recognize that at times of reevaluation of certain material, which is a maybe desire. Maybe desire. So, because the maybe desirable was maybe desire.
I'm not sure how, once again, I haven't included the different.
I don't remember either, but until I can do that. So that, okay, that, that answers that.
Okay. The next, the very last section I read on that page, A, the teacher or principal will ask the individual to complete a request for reconsideration, not reconsideration.
Okay.
A similar title. This is the library thing. On page three. I hope you're supposed to be in there. Then maybe only bring one challenge and challenges must go.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Bye, Paul. Anyone else? Do I have a motion? Except KEC as amended.
Second.
So, yes.
And second.
It's our motion by Bill, a second by Bill Field. Discussion. Roll call. We'll vote.
Hi.
Anne.
Yes.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah.
Hi.
Bill Field.
Yes.
Diane.
Yeah.
Cory.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
It is unanimous. So let's briefly get into our first reading.
Right. So the, the first one is ACAB. And in, ACAB is not redlined because the changes are so substantial. The district lawyer imposed this policy to be in compliance with the recent changes to the federal Title IX requirements. This is one of the ones that I just recommend we, we accept whole cloth.
Of course, we will not be accepting.
No, but not to, but I recommend the first reading of today. And if you have any changes in it, bring them up to Peter, because really, Rob, Rob is doing this.
That, that.
And copy Cory, but it's really going to have to go to the district lawyer.
And it would mostly be, I think, typos, really, because most of this is just.
Right.
Federal regulations.
That's kind of my point. It's really going to have to go to the lawyer. We're not going to be able to make substantial changes.
Oh, yeah. You don't want to make things apply.
Right. And then the last thing connected to ACAB is policy JIE. We're also recommending for a first reading, because Rob confirmed that with the lawyer this afternoon. All the others have been sent for the lawyer to review and will be distributed at a future meeting.
So these are the only two that are going for first reading?
Correct.
ACAB and JIE. Perfect. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. What's other subcommittees? Jason, Buildings and Grounds, unless you're immediate.
We have met formally or informal.
Thank you. Superintendent's evaluation.
Was that last week or are we meeting next week?
Thank you. Finance.
Oh, we have not met, but we are going to meet in Bill and Bill and Bonnie. I, this is just you guys. We're going to try to meet before next meeting on the 29th. So at five o'clock here.
Okay.
And, and Dorian will send out a calendar invite to everybody.
Yeah.
Okay. Negotiations, as not, and we'll hopefully meet for a while. Personnel report.
Yeah. So this, and lots of new people coming on board. We mentioned Julie Blaine, who's the new DuBois School Guidance counselor. Dan Weston is joining us as our Moneybrook Library and Media Specialist. A number of paraprofessionals, an LPN, a whole bunch of extracurricular coaches, appointments, and, and other things. So we're, we're way ahead. Like, season's just started. Notice that. We always do that. And then on the back page, current vacancies. We're very, we mentioned this, but we're very close to finalizing the administrative assistance to the principal at Moneybrook. The ELA teachers all set. The school nurse, we're very close to. And halftime French teacher were. And, and I mentioned the, the DEIB director, that, that it looks like we're going to work with consultants. So we're, from a staffing perspective, with the exception of the paraprofessional claim, we're, we're in a very good position. And it's really great to not be trying to hire people over Labor Day weekend, which happens in a lot of districts.
Okay. Next is under business operations. We have FY22 student activities audit report.
Can you hold this time, do I?
Yeah.
Why are you not?
While you want, under a minute.
No. I'll just actually, we'll talk about this. There are a number of, mostly, this is a very good finding. As you can see, this is, I think, two years to finish this. A couple of comments I want to have on page three. They talk about library activity is not an appropriate student activity account. It actually is. I'll look further into that. It is activities that Kara does with the students. So it's inappropriate. It is appropriate in there. We do our local. And then there are a number of, of comments about on page nine, pre-numbered tickets. Page 11, pre-numbered tickets. We've talked about that before. Certain activities, it's difficult to have pre-numbered tickets, but I'll work with Christopher and Carl to see which ones we can get those pre-numbered on, and which ones, we'll just write a note in the next. We'll have the next one for FY25. And then the insufficient documentation on whether they're turned over or not. We'll just have a timestamp around those.
Where is that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Page 10 and 11. Duty insufficient documentation, unable to determine if funds were collected or turned over. So we'll just have to do a timestamp on that. On page 14, they talk about disbursements, I'm sorry, not accompanied by standard request form. In this student activity guidelines that the school committee had approved several years ago, there is a standard request form. And again, I'll work with the principal and corporate general director to start using those. The second comment, the disbursements need to be signed by the principal, as well as the activity advisor and a student. So again, a lot of that is just working with the new staff there. Disposition of inactive accounts. Uh, disposition of inactive accounts, we did take care of that after F Y twenty-two, so we'll
Where's that?
Page seventeen. Page seventeen, second one, disposition of inactive accounts. Um, we did take care of that after F Y twenty, in twenty-three, so we've cleared up almost all of those accounts. We just have one that we'll go through the end of this year, and we'll be all set. And then the other comment in there, and I'm not necessarily remember what page it was on, was that the school committee hasn't been approving, um, the the accounts annually, which is why I sent them along, so that we can come up with that information.
So Sharon, I, this is more than once. We were pretty, in pretty good shape for this many years ago, and we've fallen well behind. And I know it's not your responsibility, ultimately it is, but day-to-day it's not yours. The, the next one's not due to F Y twenty-five?
That's this year.
Right.
Yeah.
So this is F Y twenty-two?
We can, I can contract to have it done for F Y twenty-four.
I think so, because I think some people have gotten sloppy, and if they continue to get sloppy, I think they, um, should be consequences.
Yeah.
And I don't wanna wait another year to find out that, what they're supposed to be doing and not doing the job.
Okay.
It's that simple, because I, I go, I've been here long enough to know when they got audits, that were pretty clean. And they should build on each other, not regress.
Yes, I agree.
So, okay.
Other questions?
Questions on?
Just on the audit, not on the F Y twenty-four?
Right.
Yeah.
And I've got questions on the funds.
Okay, well, let's do the audit first. Do we have to accept this audit?
I can do the quiz.
Okay, so do I have a motion to accept the F Y twenty-two student activities audit report?
So move.
Second?
I have a motion, second, any discussion? Well, Bill?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Bonnie?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane? Cory? Rich?
Aye.
And I, Diane, continue, Sharon.
Um, I'll take questions on the activity report.
Now, we used to do, you used to do the activities report on quarterly visits, as I remember, right?
Yeah, when we have it with the treasures report, so we can go back to doing that.
Yeah, kind of missed that. It also, it also allows us to be attached and know what's going on a little bit. And I think we lose contact when we have that.
Yeah, I think, you know.
Yeah, so testing is a student activity?
It's actually under the guidance department, that's, that's where the A P fees go in and all, and it's considered a student activity because the fees come from the student and they're used for the student.
But then there's funds left that were from year to year.
Yes.
And Sharon, will you remind me of what happens when, uh, other accounts, like a class account?
The class accounts have a two-year life, so at the end of the second year, funds aren't used. The school committee approved several years ago that those would go into the Joe Spartan Fund, which is now in, um, a donation, high school donations account, and that's used, uh, to support students who might need food trip, scholarship kind of things.
And that's established, because on the audit, it says that the school committee approval policy that specifies how these funds should be disposed on, upon a class graduation, but we've got one.
Yes, yeah.
So that's everything. Class of twenty-four, which was granted probably the full year. Ended up with eighteen thousand dollars.
Should have taken accounting, shouldn't they?
Yeah. Hey, listen, that class was terribly disappointed by the administration of high school through their four years there, and they were not well-served in many regards, including the way they were treated from a financial standpoint in senior year. So I'm shocked that there's eighteen thousand dollars there, too.
I will, um, double check on that.
Do, Sharon, do you work with a class advisors, especially as they're going through their junior and senior year? Does someone work for them about their balances and what, how they can spend it and what?
That would be the co-corrective advisor.
Yeah, but there's no class that has eighteen thousand dollars left over at the end. Um, and maybe one of the things we don't know, I know some classes have made a gift when they've had money left over, so that they bring their balances closer, not a gift to the
Well, I guess that's the question, I understand the two-year thing, so who has authority over eighteen thousand dollars right now, that class?
The, it's typically the, um, senior department officers, I think, officers.
It doesn't make sense, because there really was.
I, I will, I just put a note to correct, because the
I question the transparency information that that class was given in their junior senior year, too.
The opening balance was twenty-nine, so what I'm going to make sure that the deposits were put into the correct account.
And that all the expenses were charged against it. Yeah. So as I understand it, Sharon, after two years, that eighteen thousand, if not, how, how, so two years will be twenty-twenty-six, what, what can that be used for?
Well, like, by policy, most of the No, most of the Joe Spartan one.
Yeah.
Joe Spartan, after two years.
But, but, but having said that, that policy, that policy did not anticipate a class having eighteen thousand dollars left over. And I'm not saying it shouldn't go to the Joe Spartan one, but I think, we really have to think about this. We anticipated nine hundred and seventy-two dollars, and, well, you know, it'll go to Joe Spartan grade, it'll help all the kids. This is kind of a ridiculous amount, so let's make sure it's accurate before we
I will.
suppose on it.
This class, we know class tricks or anything.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, this is the class that had their, their Washington teacher canceled in eighth grade, never went on another field trip all through, not played sports, did not have theater their freshman year, then worked their butts off because they were told they weren't gonna have a prom, because they didn't have money, and now this is shocking, shocking.
It's true, it was like the fair
There's two people who spent many, many hours fundraising for this class. This is not reflecting information that was provided.
Let's not hope it's incorrect, but let's hope there's an explanation.
Yeah.
My other question on this is, we do have an F F A fund, am I missing it on here?
Uh, that's a separate account, that's a separate revolving fund, it's not a student activity.
Okay, so when you do your quarterly reports again, you'll have the revolving funds on it?
Yes.
To, okay, okay, because those are important for us to keep track of.
And just for context, F F A is Future Farmers of America.
It's called that, but yeah.
We don't have one anymore.
No, we do.
Yeah, we do, okay, good.
And they have jackets and
Okay, I'm glad we do.
And they're future-oriented.
But, and for years, we have plans for that money, never use it, we have plans once again for that money. Let's hope this time we get to you some. Other questions?
Question?
No, I was just wondering, where does this money come from for the classes?
The kids raise it.
They raise it.
Don't need it. Community members make community donations.
And they have dues.
And it is dues.
The dues, and they sell things.
Oh, you're gonna write a check when your kid's a senior.
They start early, they start early.
By twenty-seven, there's no money, not much money, so much.
They do it starting as, as freshmen, they start to think about it, but then they really
One year, somebody does the fall dance, and that money goes to their class, and another year is responsible for the town show, and the money that they raise goes to their class.
Sharon, it's a small amount of money, do we still have, and that goes back a number of years?
No, I had that on here, my, I was wondering if the, um, committee wanted to have that go into the athletic, transfer to the athletic revolving.
Uh, I'd rather see the, no, I'd rather wait until we do that, because I wanna see what's in the athletic revolving fund and how that's being spent.
Okay.
And I think, I, I've said this before, I think we gotta take, I, I know this is not purview, but, and I know there was major reforms like twenty years ago for this, but this booster club thing's really out of control, really out of control, unregulated, I believe improperly used, because parents and kids raise money, and then employees of this district instruct them how to spend it, and I think that's really bad. Um, you know I'm opposed to using that money to pay district employees, which we do regularly. Um, so I'd like to take a broader look at the booster club regulations. I would like to see it brought back onto this offices, I don't know what the school has control over, I don't know if that's allowed, or prevent them, because they're not necessary.
Do you wanna do that as like an ad hoc special thing, or do you wanna take it over to policy?
Well, there, there's a couple of things here, let me try them. What Rich, I think, is saying, what he's against is the extra coach that the booster clubs pay for.
That's a symptom of the problem.
Right, but when we first started this, booster clubs were actually paying coaches without our knowledge and without any tax withdrawal, so hopefully that's not happening anymore. Coaches were also assigned checks as booster club, also, as like the head of the booster club. Hopefully, we're not seeing that anymore. Hopefully
Might as well.
Well, that's
Well, and
Yeah, one of the things, there was a meeting tonight, which I used to get invited to, and I haven't been for years, about a good, maybe that's why, about a good explanation to parents about how that money can be spent and who can authorize it being spent, and no one does it say, anyone within the school can authorize it being spent. It's the parents, the booster club, who authorize how their money is spent, and there's guidelines how it can be spent.
Well, and I was following up on that, this is another thing for Christopher to follow up on, is we would have a fall booster club meeting at the beginning of the year, all the clubs, whether it's fall, winter, spring, would come, and that was the meeting that we were invited to, not the sport.
That's true, that's true.
And, and that hasn't happened in several years.
I, I think you're right on this, and we talked about it many years ago, and it's worth, it's worth talking about some more. There's also sort of a, sort of funky equity between some booster clubs for some sports that have the capacity to generate tons of resources and, and other smaller ones that like, they don't have enough money of us.
This system, right?
Yeah, so my first recommendation, my first recommendation, I'm not disagreeing with you, is to make sure that the policy we have is being followed, because we can come up with any policy we want. If we don't follow it, we're wasting our time.
I agree.
So let's make sure, so then let's get that under control, and then form a booster club.
Didn't we look at those when we looked at the activities?
Yes, those are all under one policy. But, but, let's do it again after we're sure that our policies are being followed.
If you're not following policies.
Well, but that goes back to a point, and it doesn't matter what we have, it's what we follow.
Right. I, I wanna be part of the committee that looks at this, however it is, I will tell you, my position right now is we eliminate them, we don't have booster clubs. If kids need something, district pays for it, and if the district's not willing to pay for it, kids don't need it. And that's it, and you get the parents out of this, we have a pay-for-play problem at our, at our district. Um, we have an equity problem, we just spend a lot of time going over our Title IX policies, we got a Title IX problem with what booster clubs do in limited, if you look at, you know, how money's being spent, and you could say it's an outside fund, it's not, it's under our offices. But fundraising's being done with our permission.
How do you deal with booster clubs for club campuses?
I, I think we should fund clubs. I wanna have a view of you, or with you on the thing, I wanna have a more robust way for kids to develop their own clubs, and I want those funded by the schools.
I think what we're saying, we have the oversight of how that money is spent.
Hmm, the booster clubs are completely independent by law, and we cannot
Why do we have a policy that talks about
Why do we have to approve their fundraising, and why do coaches or employees dictate how the money is spent?
Because we
And why is it spent on our employees?
We approve all fundraising requests, whether it's a booster club, whether it's a kids' activity, whether it's someone else. So that's different than just the booster club issue.
Yeah, I mean, I remember I went to a meeting and I was given all the guidelines, like, who could be on the account, who gets the financial records at the end of the season, you know, yeah, I mean, it was like a whole packet, I was Yeah, it happened, like, we would do, you know, the extra coach, but it was something that the school district paid out, and then we would pay the school district after, you know, once, if we would request it, it was approved, the school district would pay, we would reimburse the school.
So, so one of the things I would say, I'm willing to take a motion right now to authorize Sharon, she doesn't need our authorization, but it's the school committee, that we go through the co-director and athletic booster club financial aspect of the policy and make sure it's being followed to the letter, because if it's not, that's a problem, that's how we got ourselves into trouble before.
Yeah.
And we, we, we need to do that, so if someone wants to make that motion, I have no problem.
I'll make the motion.
So, a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call. Bill?
Aye.
Anne?
Yes.
Jason?
Aye.
Bonnie?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Yes, Diane? Cory?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And I, it's unanimous, let's move ahead then.
Could we have a vote on the activities?
Would you relax?
Right, you want an explanation?
Yeah, I kinda do, I mean, I don't
The, the
I suspect there is an explanation.
The approval is just for the, the accounts.
That this is what's in the account?
No, that these are the accounts that are in the student activity revolving fund.
Okay.
Not the money amount or anything, just that you approve.
So if we, if we uncover some irregularity going these lines, particularly the last two thousand twenty-four line, we still have an ability to remedy that, even if we approve this report?
You're not approving the report, you're approving the accounts that are in the fund.
Motion to approve the accounts that are in the fund.
Second.
Discussion. Bill?
Aye.
Anne?
Yeah.
Jason?
Aye.
Bonnie?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane? Cory?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Anything else, Sharon?
No.
We give you more work than
Yeah.
Yeah.
At the end of the night.
Yeah. Old business, uh, M S B A, Jason or Peter?
Um, we got some feedback from the M S B A, um, on our P D P submission, and I'm chatting tomorrow, uh, Monday with, uh, Donna DeNisto, uh, looking into sort of preparations to respond to that and have a conversation with the M S B A.
What's the next, like, official milestone on that?
Well, we haven't met since the last meeting, we're meeting Wednesday, next Wednesday, for our next meeting, I'll be able to the, the next, um, big path is we pump it from October to December, we're gonna vote, um, the committee will vote as to what the, uh, preferred planets in December.
Your committee will vote in December as to which, which of the options?
Which of the options is the preferred solution, and then that will come to this body.
Yeah, and I keep this on the plan table that we need to be on?
Exactly, for a October, the fall, twenty twenty-five vote.
Any questions on that? Any public comment?
They still, they're still nine members of the public.
Not all things. I see no public comment. I need a motion for the Virtual Regional School Committee to go into executive session pursuant to M G L thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to negotiations. Holding these discussions in open session will have a detrimental effect on negotiations. Should be in that motion, plus the Chair State's app, following executive session, the school committee will not recommitted into public.
No.
No, please don't, so we're not recommitted into public.
No.
Yes. So do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Second. Okay. Bill?
Aye.
Anne?
Yeah.
Jason?
Aye.
Bonnie?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane? Cory?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
It's unanimous, we will not be back into